A quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of November 15, 2022 is called to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, may I please have a motion to move the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by President Albridge. May I have a second?
Support.
Support from Dr. Pritchett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Merz, could you please give us a roll call vote?
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan absent. Pritchett?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
She was here.
Tilly, approval of the agenda?
Okay.
Approval of the agenda? That's a yes if you couldn't hear that. Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, Ms. Marilyn Merz-Snyder, State Board Executive, will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Happy to do so. You've just been listening to the state superintendent, Dr. Michael Rice, who is also the chairperson of the board. As we go around the table, the board's president is Dr. Cassandra Albridge. She resides in Dearborn. As we go up a level here behind Dr. Albridge, we have Ms. Tiffany Tilly. She's the secretary of the board. She's from West Bloomfield. And going further down the counter is Ellen Lipton. She is from Huntington Woods, and she's the chair of the board's legislative committee. And come back down to the table, we have Dr. Pamela Pugh from Saginaw. She's the board's vice president. Next to her is Ms. Nikki Snyder. She resides in Dexter. She's a state board member. She serves on the legislative committee. Next to her is Nanette Hansen. She's this year's Michigan Teacher of the Year, and she's a first-grade teacher at Lemur Elementary School in Escanaba area public schools in the Upper Peninsula. And as we go across the table, you see a seat for Stephanie O'Day. She represents the governor, who is an ex-officio non-voting member of the board. And Stephanie is joining us virtually today. She's the governor's K-12 policy advisor. And then back to the table, Dr. Judith Pritchett. She's the board's NASB delegate. It's their association, National Association of State Boards of Education. And she resides in Washington Township and is also a member of the board's legislative committee. In the seat next to me, that's Mr. Tom McMillan's seat. He's from Oakland Township. He is absent today. Thank you.
Thank you, Merz. Public may register to provide comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 p.m. Those wishing to make public comment must register before 1:00 p.m. today. To provide public comments by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage, www.michigan.gov/MDE. To provide public comment in person, please complete a public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed on the MDE webpage. Again, it's www.michigan.gov/MDE. For the first item on the committee, the whole agenda is presentation on state progress toward the eight goals of the state strategic education plan. This presentation on Michigan's top 10 strategic education plan is an annual review of the plan's goals and associated metrics. I'll move to the other side of the board table to present the information. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required with appreciation to a large number of the staff for the help in pulling together this fairly voluminous presentation, and with particular appreciation to Kelly Carter, our director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Implementation, and Mr. Tyler Foley as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, members of the community, I appreciate the opportunity to present Board, you approved the strategic education plan in August of 2020, two and a half years ago, just shy of two and a half years ago. Focus, direction, clear and concise goals, metrics associated with each of the goals. This is the state's strategic education plan, and we are committed to providing regular updates, goal by goal, throughout the year, and an annual update every November in progress toward those goals. Here are the eight goals. You're well familiar with those goals. But for the community, the two resource upstream goals, Goals Seven and Eight, addressing the teacher shortage and addressing adequate and equitable school funding for Michigan's public schools, helps drive everything else downstream. Similarly, the two developmental upstream goals, Goals One and Two, addressing the expansion of early childhood education and the improvement of early literacy, respectively, and health, safety, and wellness, Goal Three, help drive all the other downstream goals, Goals Four, Five, and Six, secondary school program expansion, graduation rate improvement, and post-secondary credential rate improvement, respectively. Board, we are going to go through this presentation, Goal Eight, Goal Seven, the two resource upstream goals, and then chronologically, Goals One through Six. Goal Eight. You are aware that historically, the increase in per pupil foundation allowance has been small each year. That changed in 2023 with a $450 per student increase in the foundation allowance. But we know that different children have different needs, different needs, different costs, and we can't simply fund heads. We have to fund the needs of children. So the state legislature and the governor negotiated an extraordinary budget that includes almost a half billion dollars to continue building a weighted funding model to address the different costs associated with educating students with different needs. A $246 million increase, a 15.6% increase for students with disabilities. A $235 million increase, a 45.9% increase for economically disadvantaged students. A $10 million increase, a 26.6% increase for career and technical education students. A $1.3 million increase, 5.2% increase for English learners, and a similar 5.2% increase for students in rural and isolated districts, a $438,000 increase in that category. Unique to the fiscal year 23 budget is a school consolidation and infrastructure fund, $475 million, of which no more than half may be spent on infrastructure. This is going to be enormously important for those low-assessed value communities that cannot afford sinking funds or capital villages. In January of 2018, the School Finance Research Collaborative recommended a base funding of $9,590 per student, separate and distinct from the weights that we've just discussed for economically disadvantaged students, students with disabilities, and English learners. In June of 2021, the SFRC updated that number to $10,421 per student in base funding. There hasn't been an update, Board, since June of 2021. But if there were to be an update, that update would exceed, given the inflation rate currently, $11,000 per student. So we've made tremendous strides, but we have more to go. SFRC recommended further exploration of three other areas of school underfunding: transportation costs, capital costs, and higher poverty. I'm so delighted to see the School Finance Research Collaborative, in the last few days, release a report on the additional costs associated with transportation, the differential costs associated with transportation across the state. If you are in a rural, remote area, sparsely populated, your transportation costs per child are going to be much higher than if you are in a densely populated urban area. So I'm glad that SFRC not only put this out there in 2018, but came back in 2022 to address this gap in our thinking about school funding in the state. And I'm hopeful, in fact optimistic, that our legislature and our governor will take this up moving forward in February and then moving on through the budget process. Capital costs, our state legislature added a $20 million study on the capital costs associated with running local school districts. They are extraordinary. They are, for the most part, not funded by the state, and they are certainly not explicitly funded by the state. And then there is a, there are additional costs associated, with some of which we would call higher poverty, not simply poverty, but substantial concentrations of poverty. Goal Seven of the state's top 10 strategic education plan is an increase in the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. And here, for your smiling viewing pleasure, are some of our proud Michigan educators from years past. And if you want one from, two from years present, you can simply look here in the boardroom. Our Michigan Teacher of the Year, one of our Regional Teachers of the Year, we appreciate them, and we appreciate their leadership as well. The profession has been profoundly chipped away at over a period of years, but we are rebuilding the profession in the state. In 2011, the state legislature cut $470 per child before inflation. It also required at least a 20% contribution for health insurance, and it restructured the pension system moving forward for educators coming into the pension system. The effect of all of those was a profound chipping away at, diminution in the number of young people that wanted to become teachers. We went from 23,203 enrollees in teacher prep programs in 2011, 2012, down to 9,500 in 2016, 2017. And that was a direct result of legislative action. But we are rebuilding the teacher profession as we speak. In each of the last four years, we've seen increases in teacher prep enrollment. Last four years through 2021, and I expect that when these numbers are announced in the spring of 2023, that that will show a fifth year of growth. So we've grown from 9,500 people in teacher prep programs to 13,000 people in teacher prep programs at the end of the 2021 school year, four years in a row that we know about. I anticipate a fifth year in a row in the spring. We're moving on up. We're not back to where we were in 2011, '12. We've got a long way to go, but the trend is beginning to be encouraging. So some people have said, well, this seems like it's a better year. It's a better year for some districts. It's not a better year for others in terms of staffing. It really is unique to the 835 LEAs in the state, the 56 ISDs in the state. Here, what we can see is in 2015, 2016, 5.7% of our teachers were temporarily assigned, were not appropriately credentialed. That percentage rose to 11.1%, 11,602 individuals temporarily assigned were not appropriately credentialed. So you can see an increase in this metric. We really need to improve upon this. That is a cautionary tale. What we want to do is to drive down that percentage temporarily assigned or not appropriately credentialed. So the fact that we have people that have begun in teacher prep programs does not mean, Dr. Pritchett, that they are teachers. You've got to get through the program, get hired, and get out there and do your thing to drive down that percentage temporarily assigned or not appropriately credentialed. And yet, there is help on the way. Goal Seven. We have begun to make the case, educators, community members, state boards, that not only is there a teacher shortage, but the state legislature needs to help address that teacher shortage. Fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22, we've got very small dollars. Fiscal year 23, $575 million from the state legislature for a range of efforts to address the teacher shortage, many of these initially recommended by the department. That $575 million includes $305 million for fellowships or scholarships for aspiring educators, $175 million for Grow Your Own programs for support staff, $50 million for student-teacher stipends, because we know that we are no longer in a buyer's market. We're in a seller's market. And in the seller's market, we have to incentivize in a different way. We have to pay our student-teachers for that last semester of their teacher prep program, that student-teaching portion of their teacher prep program, and then $10 million to ISDs to recruit and hire CTE instructors. What I'm going to unpack this over the next couple of minutes, because I think this bears substantial mentioning. In 1516, top left corner, 91.8% of our teachers were white, 8.2% were of other ethnicities. And I'll break that out in a moment. By 2122, 90.2% were white, 9.8% were of other ethnicities. Now, that difference between 8.2% and 9.8%, 1.6 percentage points, doesn't seem like a lot. It is, in fact, substantial progress, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. It's important to understand, Board and community, that we're interested not simply in quantity and quality of teachers, but we're also interested in the diversity of teachers, because it's important who is facing our young people, who's teaching our young people. Go to the bottom left-hand corner, if you would, please. This is our student FTE count. You can see in 1516, 67% of our children were white, 33% were of other ethnicities. By 2122, 64.6% of our children, white, 35.4% of our children of other ethnicities. Now, let's look at the ratio between students of color and teachers of color, students of color and teachers of color. 33% of our children in 1516 were students of color. 8.2% of our teachers were teachers of color. The ratio of students to color to teachers of color was approximately four to one. And we've talked about that ratio, Board, before. If you move to 2122, you can see that that ratio has changed. 35.4% of our students of color, 9.8% of our teachers of color, roughly three and a half to one ratio. It's certainly not a one-to-one ratio, and that's not going to take place anytime soon. But it is important that we are making progress in this area, and I want to break down that progress for a moment. Over the last six years, there's been an increase in the numbers of Black or African-American teachers, Hispanic or Latino teachers. And what am I talking about here? The Black or African-American teachers. 5.72% of our teacher workforce in 1516, 7% of our teacher workforce in 2122. It may not seem like a lot, but that 1.28 percentage point increase is, in fact, significant. When I say it's significant, what do I mean? The increase in Black or African-American teachers rose from 4,620 teachers to 5,787 teachers in a six-year period, and an 1,160 increase in Black/African-American teachers. Similarly, you look at Hispanic or Latino teachers, 1.14% in 1516, an increase to 1.31% in 2122. But because we're talking about a base of approximately 100,000 teachers, that increase is an increase from 917 Latino teachers to 1,086 Latino teachers, an increase of 169 Hispanic or Latino teachers. There's the increase in Black or African-American teacher FTEs in the last six years, 1,160. So when we talk about the importance of quantity and quality and diversity, we're really leaning into this with Grow Your Own programs for support staff, Grow Your Own programs for students. We think that there's a value to students being able to see themselves in their teacher, and we think that there's a value to other people being able to see other folks in their teachers. It's instructive to see a range of people in front of you in a classroom. It's instructive, on the one hand, for children of color, for African-American students, for Latino students, and it's instructive for white students to see a range of teachers in front of them as well. When we talk about the teaching profession, and when we talk about what is a greatest challenge in the teaching profession, teachers who leave the profession, number one, and individuals who make a determination that they don't want to enter the profession, number two, cite first and foremost compensation. That's not my opinion. That's survey after survey after survey after survey. We have got to pay our teachers more. We have to pay them better, and particularly at the lower end of the salary scales. At the same time, however, it would be a mistake to suggest that this is solely about compensation. It is in part about money, but that it is in part about money and it's all about money are two different things. Teaching conditions have to be improved. Those are teaching and learning conditions. If I'm a first-grade teacher and I'm teaching 30 children, and particularly if I am teaching 30 children who are coming from challenging backgrounds, I do not feel a sense of efficaciousness. Amen, Ms. Hansen?
Amen.
Yeah. So I need better conditions to be successful for my babies in that first-grade classroom. I cannot be maximally successful with 30 first graders, and particularly not with 30 first graders coming from challenged backgrounds. But quite frankly, I don't think in any community you should be teaching 30 children to read in first grade. I also think that we need to work on improving the profession, more voice for teachers, more use of the experience of teachers, because after all, it is our teachers who are doing it on a day-to-day basis. Some of us did it on a day-to-day basis. Some of us talk about it on a day-to-day basis. But our teachers are doing it on a day-to-day basis, and it's important to tap into their voices and experiences. We are tremendously appreciative of the Future Proud Michigan Educator Grow Your Own programs, Grow Your Own programs for support staff to become teachers, Grow Your Own programs for students to become teachers. I appreciate the work of our Office of Educator Excellence, our interim director, Dr. Sarah Kate Levand. OEE has been instrumental in pushing these Grow Your Own programs. I appreciate the Future Proud Michigan Educator Explore Program. These are our Grow Your Own efforts associated with students. We believe that we can begin to push the pipeline in middle school. Middle school kids going down to elementary school kids, helping out in those elementary school classrooms after school, there's a little bit of time in many communities after middle school ends, to get to that elementary school and to help out. And in some cases, many communities, the middle school kids are educated in the same building as the elementary school kids. We've got tremendous materials associated with our Explore program. In fiscal year 21, a couple of years ago, we began to incentivize Grow Your Own programs in the state. With just a little bit of Title II money, we gave some grants out to our local education agencies. In fiscal year 22, we got some money from the legislature to do the same thing. We're so appreciative that the legislature, in this fiscal year, fiscal year 23, chose to give us $175 million for Grow Your Own programs, an acknowledgement of the fact that these programs were enormously popular and that we had put out requests for application to local school districts to give out $1 million, and we got $7 million worth of applications. Clearly, there was a hunger for these programs, and the legislature acknowledged not only that hunger, but the value of these programs. We sent out Welcome Back, Proud Michigan Educator to formerly certified staff members and to currently certified staff members. This is a We Want You Back effort in the greatest spirit of Motown. Registered teacher apprenticeships for, this is a very exciting moment for the state of Michigan. Yesterday, we announced at Saginaw ISD the first registered teacher apprenticeship agreement signed with the U.S. Department of Labor. This model for educator preparation is going to provide a new pathway to teacher certification in Michigan. It's going to allow teacher apprentices to earn while they learn through an existing ed prep program with hands-on learning under the supervision of an experienced mentor-teacher. This is the way we learn how to do in a whole host of different professions in the country. And this is increasingly, over the next few years, the way we are going to acculturate and teach our new teachers in the state of Michigan. Registered teacher apprenticeships are a combination of Grow Your Own programs, extensive on the job training, with lots of time to learn about and contribute to the education of children prior to becoming fully certified teachers. It's higher education coursework at the same time. It's the use of local, state, and federal dollars to help to fray the costs of teacher preparation for candidates, and there is no lowering of the bar. Teacher apprentices will still need to participate in an educator preparation program, will still need to obtain a BA, will still need to pass the MTT to get certified, and will still need to be certified. This year, in this budget, as I mentioned earlier, Michigan Future Educator fellowships were funded at $305 million. Student-teacher stipends were funded at $50 million, a first in both cases for the state of Michigan. This is a partnership among the governor's office, Michigan Department of Treasury, and MDE. It helps address teacher shortage by lowering financial hurdles. One of the things that we hear from young teachers is, they love their job, they can't make it work financially. And there are multiple burdens associated with this. It's not just simply, Miss Perez, the entry-level salary. It is also the fact that I have the entry-level salary, and I'm dragging repayments on loans. That's hard stuff. And if we can reduce the cost of education for our young people, we can increase the number of young people that want to go into the profession in support of younger people in our public schools. PA 316 of 2020 temporarily lifted the prohibition on special education endorsements earned through alt-route programs. We have approved four related alt-route providers in the last couple of years. Board, you may remember our debate on that issue if you were at this table a few years ago. Goal One of the state's top 10 strategic education plan is the expansion of early childhood learning opportunities. Tap on your seatbelts, Board. In 1314, we increased overall funding for GSRP by 110% under Governor Snyder, and more recently, by 81% under Governor Whitmer. The number of funded slots increased under Governor Snyder by 97%, more recently, under Governor Whitmer, by 47%, and growth. The number of GSRP-eligible children served increased by 57% under Governor Snyder, declined by 28% in that first full, very difficult year of the pandemic, has reascended by 33% last year, and we continue to grow those numbers as we speak. Here you can see, Board and community, the half-day-per-pupil funding, an increase of 7% under Governor Snyder, 26% under Governor Whitmer. And so what does this mean for our youngest children in the state? The National Institute for Early Education Research out of Rutgers University in the Garden State annually rates or ranks states on their preschool programs. And we have been ranked tied for first every year in the last four years, with just a few other states on quality. That's a big deal. That's an enormous big deal. But what will be an even bigger deal, Board, is when But what will be an even bigger deal, Board, is when we take that 19th ranking on access and that 17th ranking on funding level and drive those up. We have already begun to do that. Note that those are 2021 figures, Board and community, and when 2022 figures are announced in the spring, those numbers, those rankings are both going to improve. They're both going to improve because we've added $202 million for GSRP in the state, and that is not represented on these rankings. That will be represented beginning in the spring with the 2022 numbers. That will improve both access of our young people and funding level. Now, why should we care about this? Well, remember, we talked about resource upstream affecting everything resource downstream, but there's also a developmental upstream affecting a developmental downstream. Everything you do for four-year-olds benefits everything in their lives. That's not just my opinion, it is my opinion, but it's not simply my opinion, it's the opinion of research. It's fact. And this goes back to the Perry Preschool Project in Ypsilanti in the mid-'60s. Interestingly, if I had grown up in Ypsilanti, I might have been part of the Perry Preschool Project. Some of us are that old. But the point is, is the research on the effectiveness of preschool dates to the mid-'60s. This is not a partisan issue anymore. And to be clear about that, people on both sides of the political aisle recognize that this is a game changer, and I'm so proud of the state of Michigan not only being a leader in quality, but soon being a leader in access and funding level as well. We've got a statewide recruitment campaign, which we are going to begin to embellish over the next 12 months. We've got specialized technical assistance for collaborative expansion planning to ISDs and their local partners to regrow those GSRP numbers and to really shoot them up to where they need to be post-pandemic. Goal two of the state's Strategic Education Plan is the improvement of early literacy achievement. And here, Board, you can see the numbers that we shared in great detail with you in September. These are our M-Step percent proficient, third-grade ELA scores, and most recently, you can see the decline between the 2021 M-Step results, spring of '21 M-Step results, 42.8% of our children at or above proficiency, and the spring '22 results, 41.6% of our children at or above proficiency. We have a responsibility to do better in this area. We talked about GSRP being a developmental upstream goal, so too, early literacy achievement is a developmental upstream goal, and we have to do a better job in this regard. So how are we doing this? Here you can see, I just wanted to point this out before we get rolling. Here you can see the percentages at or above proficient by ethnic group. And I don't want to belabor these now, given time, but I do want them to be a part of our record, and you will notice that for most of our groups, there is an increase between '21 and '21-'22, and you will notice that for all of our groups, we need to improve without exception. Here you can see the NAEP percent proficient in fourth-grade reading, 28.3% of our young people reading at proficiency on the NAEP, which is a much higher bar test than is M-Step. So what are we doing to boost literacy? $4 million investment in fiscal year '22 by the state legislature and the governor in collaboration to provide letters training. This is on the science of reading. 3,000 registered pre-K3 educators at this moment. This is an 18-month course, Board. This is not add-water-and-stir. This is a big league course, and when you finish it, you are better prepared to teach young people to read. Fiscal year '23, the state legislature added $10 million to provide this training for another 8,000 pre-K through 6 educators. Again, this is on the science of reading. We have got to do a better job of the how of reading for all of our children, not simply those who have children processing language, not simply those who are dyslexic, but for all of our children. Got to do a better job with the how of reading. But in addition, we have to do a better job with the why of reading too, Board, because once you break the code, once you break the code, Ms. Tilly, it becomes a question of why should I read? Why do I want to read? Well, why do children read? They learn to read, they read to learn about the world, they learn to, they want to see themselves in their reading, they want to see others in their reading. It was Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop that talked about mirrors, windows, and sliding doors, being able to see yourself in your reading, being able to see others in your reading, being able to walk through into others' lives in your reading, to learn about other places, to become lifelong learners. We have got to lean into the why of reading. It is not simply about the how. Must do a better job with the how, absolutely, necessary, but not sufficient. We've also got to do a better job with the why of reading as well. We've done facilitated professional development in diversity in literature. We have a tremendous equity in literacy guidance document, a compendium of authors and their great works, which we are updating now, a tremendous collaboration with the Library of Michigan, which does great work, Confederation of Michigan Tribal Education Directors and Tribal Librarians, they themselves do tremendous work and are great partners, Michigan Association for Media and Education. These are all among many partners in this effort to diversify the literature that our young people experience. They need to see themselves in their literature. That's not unreasonable. We've had not only one Diversity in Literacy Conference recently, the first Diversity in Literacy Conference was 2017 at Western Michigan University, Go Broncos, so I don't want to forget that one, but 2021, a Diversity in Literacy Conference. We've got another one coming up in March of 2023, and we've had four webinars in the last year and a half, and I appreciate the work of Dr. Delsa Chapman and her team in OES, Dr. Daniels, who used to lead OES, Dr. Edwards now, Shelley Probstel, and others. This is an important effort, and you know that educators recognize the need when 2,000 of them show up, albeit virtually, President Albridge, in the midst of a pandemic. MDE also started a comprehensive history instruction professional development series because some of us are not that interested in fiction. Some of us are nonfiction people. We're about science and social studies. Amen, Dr. Pugh? And so we have started a comprehensive history instruction professional development series to help our teachers learn more about the history of the country and the world, because what we find is that our history instruction needs embellishment, it needs improvement. So last year, we began with Holocaust professional development, Indigenous Nations History professional development. This year, we've extended to Asian-American history, and we are moving on to discuss a number of other historical movements in the country. We think this is going to be exciting, has begun to be exciting, and will extend to be more exciting to our educators as they learn more about the series and they engage more, and we think like the Diversity in Literacy effort, this helps engage children. It's not just about the how, although it is about the how, it's also about the why of reading. The more children read, the greater their fluency, number one, the greater their vocabulary, number two, the greater their knowledge, number three, all of which they bring subsequently to each new text before them. The Office of Great Start initiated the Birth to Five, Literacy Support Network Hubs Grant in fiscal year '22, 10 regional grantees. We hope to expand upon this in the coming years. This is currently funded out of a federal grant, and we hope to get it on more firm footing and to expand this. We think there's a tremendous opportunity to do parent education, parent involvement, family literacy throughout the state of Michigan. We think this is critical. MDE was awarded another federal grant, five-year, $16 million comprehensive literacy state development grant, say that five times quickly, through the Striving Readers Program. We then turned around and with this grant awarded to five LEAs, Benton Harbor, Detroit, Flint, Muskegon Heights, and Pontiac, subgrants, $3 million over a five-year period of time, $600,000 a year, to help them build diverse classroom libraries, to staff focused on literacy initiatives, and, 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 and. We really think that there is a value to leaning in to these communities and others, not simply with respect to the science of reading, hugely important, but also to the why of reading as well. We've produced dyslexia guidance in partnership with the Michigan MTSS Technical Assistance Center, the Regnate Comprehensive Center, members of the MDE literacy team. We've got a dyslexia advisory committee. We've produced a dyslexia handbook, a guide to accelerating learner outcomes in literacy. The legislature has been working in this area, has yet to pass legislation in this area, but we're not waiting for the legislature to pass legislation in this area. We produced this guidance because we think this is important for our educators to understand and to experience, and we're going to be having professional development in this area moving forward. The improvement of health, safety, and wellness of all learners is Goal Three of the state's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan. And if I ask you to strap on your seatbelts for Goal One, Board, strap on your seatbelts doubly for Goal Three, because you may recall, Board, there are more metrics here than in any of our other goals. This is diffuse, it's a little bit, it's a little bit staccato, so I ask you to bear with me, but in keeping faith with the board's interest in a wide range of metrics in this area, we're going to report as many metrics as we have, and we're going to keep coming back to you as the metrics are, as the data come in on the different metrics. Last board meeting, you heard Dr. Chapman and Mr. Tom Howell from SEPI note that we had had a decline in our attendance rate last year. You also heard them say that we had had an increase in the percentage of students who were chronically absent last year, an increase from 19.9% of our children chronically absent to 38.5% of our children who were chronically absent. Ms. Snyder, so what exactly does that mean? Chronically absent means that you missed 10% or more days. It is a toggle switch statistic. If you are there, if a student is there 163 of 180 days at school, that's 90.5% attendance, he or she is not chronically absent. If, on the other hand, that student were to miss 18 days and were to be in attendance 162 of 180 days, that would be 90%, and at 90% or below, that student is chronically absent. Did you have a question?
I do, just out of curiosity. I noticed that you have, on the previous slide, it says, prior to school year '17-'18, a student was counted absent only if they missed a full day.
Yep.
But beginning then, it was if they missed more than 50% of the school day. Does that translate down to the chronically absent as well? Is that 50% as opposed to full day?
It does. Yep. It certainly does. Yep. So on this slide, we have to be concerned about attendance. Attendance is an important input that helps drive outputs in a whole host of different ways, and we believe that our attendance is going to increase for a couple, three reasons. One, we think people are going to be healthier this year. Two, we think they're going to be more likely to attend, to reascend from the pandemic. Three, we think our local educators are going to lean into attendance to a greater extent. My only point of pointing out the definition, a federal definition, I might add, to this chronic absence is that it is an unusual statistic where only a single absence can change your category and change your category so profoundly with this particular label. When we produced this strategic education plan, Board, you asked for a wide range of metrics, and you may recall, Dr. Pugh, that you were particularly interested in asthma and in lead. And here we have the most recent statistics associated with children that had ever been told that they had asthma or were currently suffering from asthma. You can see a small decline in the 2021 school year. We do not know if that is a recording decline, if that is associated with reporting, or if that is actually what children are experiencing. So we're very interested in seeing the next round of data for last school year '21-'22 to see if this is part of a trend or if it is really a one-year, sort of a one-off. Similarly, with respect, yes, please.
I'm so sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is it, this is self-reporting of the student?
It is, it is self-reported, yes.
Okay.
Yep. So with respect to lead, it's the same thing. You can see a decline, particularly in the percent of students who are noted as having high lead levels, and this is not a self-reported number, but it is a one-year decline, it's actually a couple-of-year decline, but a really quite profound decline. It's basically a decline of 1/3 from 2020 to 2021. We wonder when the next round of data is put out, will this pattern be continued or will that be a, really a one-off? Here are the metrics associated with the National Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and these are metrics that we get every other year. We anticipate the 2021 data, these data lag quite a bit. We anticipate the 2021 data next month, and you can see in these data, Ms. Tilly, some elements that you were particularly interested in and you raised during the debate around the Strategic Education Plan formation. So we anticipate getting those soon, and we'll be sharing those with the board when we do. Michigan's national rank for overall child well-being in 2021, this lags behind where we are by a year, by the Annie Casey Foundation, is 32, and you can see it's been in the low 30s mostly for the last six years, with the exception of 2020. We improved in 2021 in 11 of 16 categories, but others improved more in 2021. Our rank deteriorated a little bit. We'll see what happens in 2022 and moving forward. Goal Three, to improve the health, safety, and wellness of our students, benefits enormously by an additional $245 million negotiated again by the, between the governor and the state legislature, a mix of recurring and nonrecurring funding in four related categories to improve children's mental health support. Note, Board, before the '18-'19 school year, we had precisely nothing in the state school aid act for children's mental health. So to talk about an increase of almost a quarter of a billion dollars is almost unfathomable, given the fact that just a few short years ago, Dr. Pritchett, when you were an education administrator, when I was a local education administrator, there was nothing in this category, and we were left to fend for ourselves out of the per pupil foundation allowance and 31A, and, and, and. This $245 million is broken up, as noted, $150 million for LEAs for their discretionary mental health needs, $45 million for trails funding, $25 million to existing funding for school-based health centers, $25 million in increases in existing mental health grants to ISDs for mental health professionals and school-based mental health centers. This is 31 and 6 funding. This is the funding that began in fiscal year '19, just four and a half short years ago. This budget also includes an additional $210 million, a little bit more than a fifth of a billion dollars, a mix of recurring and nonrecurring funding. $168 million of this money is in per pupil grants to public schools and non-public schools to improve their public safety, $25 million to hire school safety officers, $15 million for cross-system intervention support, and a $2 million investment to create a school safety and mental health commission housed within MDE to provide recommendations to reduce youth suicide, to strengthen the mental health of school-aged children, teens, and families through a comprehensive statewide families through a comprehensive statewide approach. Prior to this very significant state investment in children's mental health, we were left to scramble to get funding for children's mental health. And one of the things that we did was this Caring for Students program. It endures to this day. Since 2020, we've secured an additional $20 million in Medicaid funding, federal Medicaid reimbursement, to help improve our children's mental health supports in the state. At the beginning of the pandemic, with the 9.5% set aside from CARES Act funding, we created an education equity fund, approximately one-fifth of that, $7.65 million. Pardon me, was awarded in competitive grants to LEAs across the state. Half million was given to us by the Michigan Health Endowment Fund to help support the development of SEL, social emotional learning, in applicant districts across the state, because what we know is, Board, that it's not simply about Tier Two and Tier Three mental health support. Hugely important, hugely important, have to deal with the most profound needs of our young people. But in addition to that, it's Tier One supports as well. It's for all children, and the professional development around what social emotional learning is and what it is not is really critical. We added 508 new school-based helping professionals in the last year, school nurses, counselors, social workers, and psychologists. Or what we know is, our ratios are among the worst in the country in these helping professionals. It's an outrage, and I don't want to get overly anecdotal in my presentation. You can tell I kind of like numbers. But, you know, in my former, former life as a local superintendent in New Jersey, we had a nurse in every school, in every elementary school, every elementary school, 14 elementary schools, 14 nurses. We had two middle schools, two nurses in each middle school. We had a 3,400 kid high school, three nurses in that 3,400 kid high school. I come to be superintendent in southwest Michigan, three nurses for the entire district, and that was a district that had more students than my district in northern New Jersey. But that's a function of the better funding of schools in New Jersey than in southwest Michigan. And the paradox is, in northern New Jersey, we were a low-tax, low-spend jurisdiction. In southwest Michigan, we were slightly above-average tax, slightly above-average spend jurisdiction. So when you're slightly above average in Michigan, you fund helping professionals historically, less than historically they did in New Jersey. But that is changing. 508 new school-based helping professionals in the last year funded with so-called Section 31O funding. That's the good news. The bad news is that local school districts, if they could have found them, would have hired three times this amount. Let me try to get. Would have hired another thousand, a doubling, a tripling of the amount. That's really important, because what we are finding is, we have to build these helping professional pools. They do not exist in the state, but we are working to develop these pools right now. And our Office of Health and Nutrition Services has been instrumental in that, led by Dr. Diane Golosinski, and we have other ideas for building out these professions, the most important of which, of course, is to continue to fund these professionals. Not precisely build it and they will come, but it is in part build it and they will come. There have to be jobs. OHNS has done some great web-based platform training of LEAs around food service, professional development. We've got an SEL community of practice. In the midst of the pandemic, two years ago, almost to the day, we started an SEL slash Children's Mental Health Network, 25 partners, instrumental in the promotion of Children Matter, U-Matter, Learn SEL. That 9,400 educators that have had SEL training is really an understated number, because that's the training associated with Michigan Virtual's course. Many, many other people have had training in SEL, but it hasn't necessarily been the Michigan Virtual course. And I think noting here at the bottom, BH Works is a comprehensive platform for screening and monitoring our student mental health needs at the local school district level. This is a big deal. It's no longer people keeping notes on, you know, in notebooks or on Excel spreadsheets. This is an effort to really do a better job of recording needs, referring children out, getting them services quickly so they are less at risk, because we have many, many of our young people who are at risk on a regular basis. Goal Four of the state's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan is the expansion of secondary learning opportunities for all students. And here, Board, you may recall, there were eight secondary school learning opportunities that we, six secondary school learning opportunities that we particularly focused on. CTE, AP, IB, early middle college, dual enrollment, and secondary school transition services, or special education transition services. Let's unpack them one by one. CTE, number and percent of students enrolled in CTE programs. Board, look at the increase from 1516 to 1920 in CTE. This is an enormously important area, career and technical education. This is an area where we will be leaning hard over the next few years. Our young people are hungry for CTE experiences. We have CTE deserts in the state. We have got to do a better job in this area. We were improving pre-pandemic. You'll note 107,000, almost 108,000, 111,000, gentle increases pre-pandemic, a decline in that first full year of the pandemic, an increase next, this past year. So we're not back to where we were pre-pandemic, but we're improving. We're on the upswing again, and that's important. We can unpack these data by ethnicity, and here you see them by ethnicity, and here you see them by disability, economic disadvantage, and English learner status. Similarly, we look at CTE completers. CTE participation is I take a course or two, a stray course or two. Good experiences, not like taking the whole of a particular area. CTE completer status means you have completed the breadth of a given discipline. And you will notice that CTE completers increased from 35,000 to 50,000. That's a big deal pre-pandemic, an enormous increase pre-pandemic, a decline in the first full year of the pandemic, a very gentle increase last year. Between 1516 and 2122, an increase of 9,000 young people who have gone through a full CTE program, Ms. Lipton. That's a big deal. Here you can see that unpacking by ethnicity, and here you can see it by disability, by economic disadvantage, and by English learners. Number of CTE students who received a high school diploma. To be involved in CTE is to be more likely to get a high school diploma. That's for two reasons. The one reason is, is correlative. CTE students are simply, in certain cases, more focused students. Second reason is, not correlative, it's causal, that I find a reason for school in my CTE programming, and that drives my effort, Dr. Pearson, throughout my educational experience. We think that this is an area that is enormously important for our young people, not simply for some of our young people to get through high school, but to continue through post-secondary education, and we'll talk about that in a second. So you'll notice a big increase in CTE completers through that first year of the, through pre-pandemic stage, and then a light decline in the first full year of the pandemic. Here we unpack the data by ethnicity, and here we unpack the data by disability, economic disadvantage, and English learners. Early middle college. So, Board, dual enrollment is to early middle college as an individual CTE course is to CTE completion. Dual enrollment is being in high school and college at the same time, being in high school and taking a college course or two. It's a good experience. Early middle college is being in high school and being in a full program in college. So again, CTE, individual CTE course to CTE completion, dual enrollment to early middle college. Amen? Okay, not Sunday. Early middle college, this was a big initiative of Governor Snyder, and I think we have to give props where props are due. There were a number of things that the former governor did in public education that I did not agree with. I think this was terrific. He recognized that our young people were capable of more and hungry to do more. Our early middle college students have increased from 8,300 to 15,000, and that number only barely deteriorated in the pandemic. It continued to increase through the first full year of the pandemic, 2021, and it only slightly diminished in the second year of the pandemic. 7,000, almost a 7,000 student increase in a six-year period of time. This is a big deal. This is young people self-actualizing, this is young people gaining college credit, this is young people, in some cases, gaining college degrees while they are in high school. Game-changing, game-changing, to find out while you are in high school that you are capable of more in your life, in college, in your career. Here we unpack the data by ethnicity. Here we unpack the data by disability, economic disadvantage, and English learner status. Here's the number and percent of students who successfully obtained their high school diploma and earned an early middle college outcome. You can see a doubling of that number over the last five years. Here you can see those students who obtained their high school diploma, they did not earn an early middle college outcome. That's not a bad thing, they went on to college rather than stay for the so-called 13th year of early middle college. And President Albert, you may recall that you asked for that statistic to be included during the debate on the Strategic Education Plan. Number of students enrolled in advanced placement compared to the total population. These programs, Board, compete with one another. They compete with one another for students, and as one program rises, another may fall a little bit. And so I think that as early middle college gained in popularity, AP declined perhaps a little bit in popularity. You'll notice that the AP numbers rose, but began to decline pre-pandemic and declined more substantially during the pandemic. Overall, from 1516 to 2122, you will notice a decline, you will notice a decline of 2,000 students. And here we unpack those data by ethnicity, by economic disadvantage. Importantly to note here that AP participation among economically disadvantaged students has risen almost 2,000 students in a six-year period of time. International baccalaureate, there are some schools in the state, not an enormous number of them, but some schools in the state that have international baccalaureate programs. And you will notice that the IB numbers bounce a little bit. Again, there's a competition for students in these programs, but you will notice that between 1516 and 2122, the number of children in IB programs increased by 1,400 in the state. Here's an unpacking of those numbers by ethnicity, by economic disadvantage, and to dual enrollment. So dual enrollment, again, loose college courses while you're in high school. The difference between taking a full program in computer programming, perhaps five or six courses, and a single course in computer programming. Here you can see that dual enrollments numbers ascended until the pandemic hit and have declined the last two years. Overall, a thousand student increase in dual enrollment over a six-year period of Number and percent of youth ages 16 and above with an IEP who meet the necessary federal reporting requirements. Here, Board, you can see, and this is a compliance standard, you can see that for 94% of our students, we met the compliance standard, the federal compliance standard. Here is the result standard, and the result standard, this is for youth ages 16 and above, again, with an IEP meeting requirements. In order to be counted as meeting the standard, you have to be involved in higher education, number one, you have to be competitively employed, number two, you have to be enrolled in a post-secondary education slash training program, number three. We have to determine a goal or a standard, you'll see that in the first row. In the second row, you can see the percentage of students meeting the standard, and you can see that in the last couple of years for which we have data, that we declined in the standard, and we need to improve upon that mark. So let's talk about a few of our efforts, and, Board, we're going to share more on career and technical education in the coming months, because there is a lot to understand about this area, and there's a lot to be able to lift up and amplify and appreciate, but also improve upon in this area. We have been reviewing through our Career Pathway Grant process, every one of our CTE programs. Seventeen have been reviewed, I have had credentials approved associated with, nine are in the approval process, 29 still to be reviewed. What am I talking about? Well, these are the 17 that have approved credentials, and I will not read those for you, at the risk of you determining that I am insufficiently literate. But they move from cosmetology to construction, from aerospace to automotive technician, wide range of different areas. Here is an example of the industry-approved credentials that our kids can learn in CTE while in high school. Look at this laundry list for computer programming slash programmer, that's a big deal. And what we'd like to do is to build this out for every one of these areas, so that our young people increasingly see the value of their education. This is important. The work in CTE is very similar to the work in diversity and literacy, is very similar to the work in comprehensive history instruction. This is all about kids saying, oh, now I understand why I'm here, now I get why I'm working, now I get why I'm going to school, now I understand what I want to try to learn more about. We're not saying that it's important to be a cosmetologist or a computer programmer, a welder, or a computer-assisted design. We don't care. What we want is to, for you as a student, to be excited about your work, because if you're excited and engaged about your work, you're more likely to stick to it, to enjoy it, to do well in it, and to advance in it. This fall, MDE is using the College Board AP Potential Tool to identify students who are likely to succeed in AP coursework. If you are likely to succeed in AP coursework, you are likely to be able to get college credit. If you get college credit, you learn in high school that you are capable of work at the next level. That may not be an epiphany for some who grow up with parents who are telling them, you're going to college, you're expected to go to college, and, and, and. But if you did not go, if your parents did not go to college, this can help you become first-generation college-going. This is a big deal. We're identifying students based on their PSAT. We're identifying students based on their PSAT performance. We've notified local superintendents of this. We've had informational webinars, MASSP. Our Secondary School Principals Association is behind this. We're issuing 40,000-plus letters this week to parents and students saying, based on your PSAT scores, you are capable of success in advanced placement participation. I want to make two points about this. There are an enormous number of students who are capable of AP. And it is not simply a function of your PSAT performance. That's really critical. But this is one way to identify success or likely success in AP. So that's number one. Number two, I said that's number one. That's scary. Reminds me of a president. Number two, that you are capable of success in AP also means that you are capable of success in dual enrollment, in early middle college, in career and technical education, in international baccalaureate. And we want our children to reach for the highest level of rigor of which they are capable. Enormously important. And so this letter that we are sending this week to parents across the state is an effort to raise the rigor, to get them and their children to begin to reflect upon the rigorous offerings in their schools and what they might be capable of in the ensuing years. Goal five of the state's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan is the increase of the percentage of students who graduate from high school. Here, Board, you can see in bands, the four-year graduation rate, the five-year graduation rate, and the six-year graduation rate over the last 10 years. The green is the 2011 numbers. The purple are the 2021 numbers. So that first band, we increased our four-year graduation rate by 6.2 percentage points over a 10-year period of time, from 74.3% to 80.5%. We increased our five-year graduation rate by 5.4 percentage points in a 10-year period. We increased our six-year graduation rate by 5.1 percentage points during that 10-year period of time. Every one of our student groups increased over a 10-year period. Let us unpack for a couple of ethnic groups so you can see how these slides work. I don't want to belabor them, but I want you to understand how they work. So four-year graduation rates, these are graduation rates of Asian-Americans. Over a 10-year period of time, Asian-American graduation rates increased by 5.7 percentage points. Over a five-year period of time, they increased by 2.5 percentage points. And over a one-year period of time, they declined by seven tenths of a percentage point. That pattern is roughly what you will see for all ethnic groups. Increases in 10-year rates for all, increases in five-year graduation rates for most, a decline in the one-year rate, 2021, in that first full year of the pandemic. Here you see Black or African-American graduation rates. Again, an increase of 10.6 percentage points, double-digit increases over 10-year, two tenths of one percentage point in over five-year, a 2.8 percentage point decline last year. Hispanic or Latino, a 12.1 percentage point increase over 10-year, 2.1 percentage point increase over five-year, a decline of eight tenths of one percentage point in 2021. We do not have 2022 data yet. That data will be shared in February, we anticipate. And again, you can see the graduation rates, 10-year, five-year, one-year, Native American or Alaskan native, Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, two or more races, and Here you can see graduation rates for economically disadvantaged students. 5.8 percentage point increase over 10 years, 1.7 percentage point increase over five, and in that first full year of the pandemic, a 2.9 percentage point decline. Here you can see the increase over the last decade by English learner status, 10.9 percentage point increase over 10 years, three tenths of a percentage point increase over five, a decline of 1.3 percentage points in that first full year of the pandemic. Here you can see the same for students with disabilities. 5.1 percentage point increase over 10-year, 1.6 percentage point increase over five-year, a decline of 2.3 percentage points in the first full year of the pandemic, graduation year 2021. So what are local and state efforts to address graduation rates? We've got the Special Education Instructional Leadership Network, a focus on inclusion and quality Tier One instruction, the Personal Curriculum, the Path Forward Strategic Action Plan for Special Education in the state, led by Dr. Scott Kennick-Schneck, and the MDE Graduation Increase Guidance Document, which will be shared by Dr. Chapman in just a moment. Goal six of the state's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan is an increase in the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential. And this goal is the governor's so-called 60% by 30 goal, 60% of all adults ages 25 through 64 with a certificate or degree. And you will notice an increase in the percentage of adults with a certificate or degree from 43.4% to 49.1%. That's a nice increase pre-pandemic. These data really lag. They're from the Lumina Foundation, and they are our laggiest of our lagging indicators. And we anticipate in 2023, the 2020 data, I would like to see the impact of some of the initiatives in the state on these numbers, and I'd like to see what happened during the pandemic with the credential attainment. Here is the unpacking of the different types of credentials. It's not simply associate, bachelor's, and graduate degrees, but it's also certificates and the sorts of industry-recognized certifications that I shared earlier. Here are, just in bulleted form, some of the efforts within the department that are helping to drive those numbers, our CTE work, our early-middle-college work, our advanced placement work, our transition services for special education students. And there are a couple of really significant efforts in labor and economic development. Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Development, led by Director Susan Corbin. The governor during the pandemic established two really important programs. Michigan Reconnect, a scholarship program which pays individuals to attend an in-district community college tuition-free, provides one-time grants for enrollment. 18,000 people have enrolled in this program. And Futures for Frontliners, which was begun at the very beginning of the pandemic to offer essential workers an opportunity to complete high school or community college tuition-free. 26,000 participants enrolled in that program. We believe that those efforts over a period of years will be visible in the numbers. They're not going to be visible in the 2020 numbers, right? Because these programs were really established in the back half of 20 into 21. Their numbers will be visible moving forward. We think these are going to be really impactful in future years. In summary, a generational budget approved by the governor and state legislature, $2.6 billion increase for Michigan Public Schools. That said, given capital costs, higher poverty student costs, transportation costs, in addition to the categorical funding needs that we have discussed, School Finance Research Collaborative continues to believe that we are underfunded by billions of dollars annually, and so too does at least one state superintendent. Goal seven, teacher preparation enrollment has increased each of the last four years for which we have data, and we anticipate that this will continue, given the fact that we've got $575 million from the state legislature to begin to improve the quantity of young people going into the profession, as well as the quality and the diversity. 1,167 more African-American teacher FTEs, 169 more Hispanic or Latino teacher FTEs in the last five years. Very proud of our Grow Your Own programs, our Welcome Back Proud Michigan Educator programs, the recent announcement yesterday of the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship agreements in Saginaw ISD. We anticipate more of those agreements by LEAs and ISDs across the state in the coming months, with appreciation for Dr. Sue Carnell, our chief deputy superintendent, who really helped shepherd the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship work within the department, as well as Candace Vincent in the Office of Career and Technical Education, Dr. Brian Piles, head of OCTE, and many others who leaned into this important work. Michigan GSRP program tied for first nationally, with an expectation that our ranking is going to improve in funding and access in the coming announcement. $202 million additionally for GSRP over the next, to expand GSRP over the next few years, and additional 24,000 slots available due to funding increases. We talked about the letters training, really important to lean in to the science of reading. We talked about the CLSD grant. But in addition, as well as the work on letters training, as well as the work on dyslexia guidance, we have to lean into the why of reading, not simply the how of reading, but the why of reading. The diversity in literature, critical. The comprehensive history instruction, critical. Why do children read? It's as important as the how. Once they learn how, we've got to engage them. We've got to excite them. And for some children, it's about frogs and toads and salamanders and snakes and all those good sciency sorts of things. And for others, it's about history and social studies and governance and so on. So there really is an importance of connecting children with richer work, both in terms of nonfiction and fiction. Fiscal Year '23 money, goal three, $245 million for children's mental health, $210 million for student safety. We are developing, as we speak, a comprehensive children's mental health system in the state. It is going to take us a number of years to get there, but I am so tremendously encouraged by the work of the last four years. The SEL work has been impactful. That's Tier One, children's mental health. It's for everyone. It's the notion that children need to be self-aware, they need to be aware of others, they need to self-manage, they need to have relationships with others, and they need to exercise responsible decision-making. But we have to lean in and do better for children with Tier Two and Tier Three challenges. And BH Works, our online platform for working with recording and screening the children's mental health challenges in our local school districts, now working in 70% of our ISDs. CTE completers are up 42%. Were down initially in the pandemic, slightly up in the second year of the pandemic, up in aggregate 25% in the last six years. Early middle college enrollment up through that first year of the pandemic, down slightly in the second year. AP enrollment up pre-pandemic, a beginning of a deterioration pre-pandemic and into post-pandemic, down 2% in the last six years. CTE programs, we're working to flesh out all of the sorts of industry credentials that our children can learn in high school. We're doing the AP potential letters here in the next couple of days. Graduation rate has increased in eight of the last 10 years, a decline in the first full year of the pandemic by 1.6 percentage points. We will see what happens in the second full year of the pandemic, 2022, the June 2022 results. Those will be available in the winter of 2023. A reason, Ms. Marilyn Merch-Snyder, for you to turn in, tune in for the state board meeting. Black or African-American student graduation rates up double digits in the last 10 years. The same is true for Hispanic or Latino student graduation rates, double digits in the last 10 years. They, like other student groups, down in the first full year of the pandemic. We have a responsibility to drive those numbers upward, not simply for these two groups, but all groups. And Dr. Chapman is going to talk about that in a moment, and you can see the general rule underneath there. And here's the work that we've done in terms of the sixth goal, the state Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, an increase in the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential. You note that a number of efforts, local school districts, ISDs, and the department are pushing. A number of efforts are being pushed by the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, Futures for Frontliners, Michigan Reconnect programs, and others. And I would be remiss if I did not thank Leo for its help in making the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship announcements yesterday. Leo was a great partner and will continue to be a great partner in that effort. And thanks to Russell Davis from the U.S. Department of Labor for his attendance yesterday at Saginaw ISD and his support of Registered Teacher Apprenticeships. I want to thank the Board for its leadership and partnership. We have miles to go before we sleep, but we have made tremendous progress notwithstanding a pandemic. Thank you very much.
Stay there for just a second. Board, know that this presentation will be on the website, and people can access the presentation. I encourage people to look at not simply the broad strokes, but the granular as well. There's a lot to unpack. Questions and comments from Board members? I'll stay down here just in case we need to re-refer to any particular slide or slides. And if you don't have comments, if I've completely anesthetized you, that's all good, too. Ms. Lipton.
I hope you'll indulge me. I have a series of questions based on, and I'm going to try to refer to pages in the presentation, just for clarity. So with respect to teacher preparation enrollment, and I don't need you to refer to the slide. I'm just, this is for my own self. We talk about teacher preparation enrollment. Study slide 20.
Yep.
And we see the numbers starting at 23,000, declining, down to 95, and some change.
95, 12, yep.
Up to 13,000. Do we have any sense, though, of what the correct number should be? I feel like sort of knowing what you want to be would give a little bit more color to these numbers.
Yep. So it's a great, it's a great point, and it would be absolutely ideal. But the answer to your question is no. We do not. Because it's one thing to understand what you produce, it's another thing to understand how you leak. So a pipeline is not simply what comes into the profession, it's what stays in the profession. And so you need to produce more, the leakier your pipeline is. You need to produce less, the more solid your pipe is. To the extent that teachers want to stay in the profession, feel valued, feel reasonably compensated, feel like they are making progress with young people, to the extent that all that is the case, you have fewer leaks, and you need fewer young people or mid-career folk entering the profession. To the extent that they do not feel that, you need more people flowing into that pipe. To the extent that they do not feel that, you need more people flowing into that pipeline, because you have greater people leaking out.
So now I'm going to go to, oh, the discussion about, let's see, my note says it's page twenty-five, but let me just see if that's the slide or the actual page.
What's the it?
The topic is on the science of reading.
Yep.
And what I'm curious to know is when the teachers are going into these, I'm assuming it's sort of like a professional development or supplemental. Is it recommended? It doesn't sound like it's a requirement that they do this, it sounds like it's a recommendation.
It is a recommendation, it is not a requirement. It is a year-and-a-half-long professional development. It is the most rigorous professional development that many of us will ever have. And so it is not, it is not required. There is some question about whether we should require it, and that is a question that we will be reflecting upon in the next two or three years with our teacher leaders. But we want, we want to gather some data to inform that question.
Is it something that can or should be incorporated into teacher prep programs like even earlier, or is that just too much to throw at a young teacher?
So there are two answers. The one answer is I think we need to do a better job in our teacher prep programs in the teaching of the science of reading. That said, I don't think you could shoehorn letters training necessarily into a four-year experience. So do we need to do better early? Yes. Could we incorporate letters in that four-year teacher prep program? I think that's probably a lot to shoehorn in. But yes, we need to do better earlier.
I've got page sixty, again, I don't know if it's that page or it's the slide, but when the discussion was regarding chronic abscess and the definition, is there some thought to differentiate that definition just to sort of, I feel better understand and better help our students so that perhaps it might be a chronic absence, which may be like a super chronic absence? Because just, I feel like that's a little bit of a blunt definition, which you acknowledged in the presentation.
It's an awkward definition, it's also a federal definition. And so I don't, I don't feel like, I mean, arguably, we could create any sort of definitions we want within the state. We report this out, we have a responsibility, I think, to report it out, but at the same time, I think we have a responsibility to contextualize it. It is blunt. I would argue this is the better, this slide right here, it's the slide before, it's the attendance rate slide, sort of the daily attendance rate slide. I think that is probably the best bellwether. Another way to do this is to look at attendance in bands, your top quarter of attendance, your next quarter of attendance, your next quarter of attendance, your next quarter of attendance. What you find is, when we did a version of this, you find that there aren't an enormous number of kids that are missing sixty, seventy, eighty days. There are too many kids that are missing eighteen-plus days. And the reality is, is eighteen days is ninety percent attendance. Ninety percent attendance sounds pretty good. You know, when we used to get ninety percents on our tests, that was pretty good. Missing eighteen days of school is two a month. That does not sound good. That's really problematic for students and teachers. So this is going to be a very significant effort in local school districts. Our teachers, our administrators, our support staff know that we cannot get it done unless our young people are in front of us. But I agree with you, the chronic absenteeism percentage is a little bit, it overstates the case. And yet, we don't want to walk away from the fact that at eighty-eight percent attendance rate, we need to do better in the state.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand, so the necessity of the locals, so putting aside the chronic absenteeism, which is a federal requirement, that you're confident that the reporting by local school districts of attendance rate is a good measure for them to be able to, you know, potentially look at local problems that might be coming about in their school district, about, you know.
I do think it is. Yeah.
Loads, not loads, but more than we want students, you know, whether it's transportation issues, whether it's, I don't have clothes issues, those types of really important drill down.
Well, each school has to drill down.
Okay.
And make a determination of, why isn't Michael at school? You know, is Michael cutting school? Is Michael embarrassed because he only has one pair of pants? And he's worn that pair of pants seven days in a row? He doesn't have food? He doesn't have transportation? What is going on? So you do have, the way to drive this is kid by kid, classroom by classroom, school by school, across the state. These numbers are going to improve in the coming year. I feel very strongly about that. Question becomes, can they ascend to a level where we can be maximally impactful from an education perspective? We want them to ascend to pre-pandemic levels, but we'd like them to blow through those as well. And that's going to take years of work. I also think that there are some counting issues in certain districts, and so, and those districts have some appreciation for those issues. What else?
Okay, when we were talking about improving the health, safety, and wellness of students, the additional dollars that were put in, this is more of a, just a general question. When the department determines that the money allotted isn't the full amount needed or is not enough to fully cover the need, how is the money allotted? Is it based on?
Which money are we referring to?
So in terms of, you talked about the additional two hundred and forty-five million dollars, Goal Three, improving the health, safety, and wellness of students. Which was a huge increase over historical. And so my sense, my question is, my sense is that the department knows what the right amount should be, because obviously the number has increased. Assuming that that particular metric is not being fully funded, I'm just curious to know, how is that money allotted? Is it on some sort of?
So this money is on a per pupil basis, okay? So two hundred and forty-five million dollars, of which a hundred and fifty million, the hundred and fifty million on the screen, is on a per pupil basis.
Is it based on accounts?
Yep.
Okay.
So that's the first part of your, first part of the answer. The second part of the answer is, big increases over the last two years. The third part of the answer is that we don't know precisely what we need. And it's going to take us some time to figure out what a built-out comprehensive mental health system looks like and how much it will cost over a period of years. You will note that these are nonrecurring funds. I want the board and community to look at this. So we have done a terrific job in this area in the last few years, but these dollars are a mix, this particular portion of dollars are nonrecurring funding, and the children's mental health dollars in the state budget are a mix of recurring, nonrecurring, recurring and nonrecurring. So as we continue to build out this system, we will be continuing to work with our governor, our state legislature, our local educators, and, and our ISD educators, to flesh out the precise financial needs for this comprehensive mental health system. It truly is a work in progress, and anybody who tells you precisely that they know these numbers, what this will be, you know, fully mature, I think is making things up. I am appreciative of the fact that Dr. Diane Golzinski is behind me, she's the Director of the Office of Health and Nutrition Services, and she regularly tells me whether I'm roughly on the right track or, yeah, not so much. I'm looking, I'm looking for the thumbs up, I got a thumbs up. I didn't get two thumbs up, but I got one. So anyway, I think, I think we're appreciative of the financial support, but we're cognizant of the fact that so much of this is in people. And we just have to have more helping professionals in our schools, have to have more nurses, guidance counselors, school social workers, school psychologists, they cost money. They are well-educated, they are well-trained, and we have to pay them well. We expect that they are going to develop and work in and stay in the state of Michigan.
I have a couple more questions.
Please.
On, I believe it's slide, just checking, slide fifty-three, when we're talking about increasing post-secondary.
Increasing secondary?
Increasing, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Which program?
I do want to just make a comment, so I don't, I've been in the post-secondary space for quite some time now, particularly my work with the Promise Zones. And although I do appreciate the reason behind identifying students with this College Board AP potential tool, I do want to make sure, though, that we don't overuse that tool in terms of tracking students, because in my experience, there are a lot of students who I would consider them late bloomers, that in the ninth grade, probably we're not doing that great on a standardized test. But I can tell you now, having been in the post-secondary space and dealing with the most economically disadvantaged, vulnerable students, we've got students now who are going on for graduate programs and what have you. So I think it's a good idea if it's used to try to find those diamonds in the rough, but just, at least my plea is that you recognize that that is a very, very imperfect tool, and that there are many, many other ways of finding those diamonds in the rough. And many diamonds are very, very rough in ninth grade, but by the time we get them to community college and beyond, they really shine very, very, very brightly. So that was more of a comment.
I want to make sure that they get to college. And sharing with some parents and some students about their capacity for college, when they previously did not think that they had a capacity for college or path to college, can be life-changing, can be trajectory-changing. So I acknowledge it is a single way, among many others, to identify kids for AP, but I want there to be epiphanous opportunities, awakening opportunities for some of our families around their potential. They may never have been told that they are capable of success in higher education, and that's a sadness, as you know, and feel.
Yes, and I'm just, and not to, you know, make a plug for anyone, but I would like to say, I was very proud to receive the Promise Keeper Award for my work with the Promise Zone Association from Michigan College Access Network. And I would like to say that the work that MCAN is doing through our local cans, as well as our Promise Zones, I'm very proud of that work, and it's really something that I think the department, if they haven't already taken a close look at, to really look at how we are advancing the needle with some very, very sound, data-driven, and best practices in terms of how we best can get students to and through college. Because getting them to college is one hurdle, but getting them through successfully, and we have over a decade of work having done that. So that concludes my question, thank you.
Who's next? Ms. Tilly.
So first of all, I want to thank you and your staff for this, this is a lot of data, and this is a whole book. And it's a lot to process, but I have probably more questions than answers at this point. I definitely want clarity on some of the things that stuck out to me. On page ten, teacher preparation enrollment, which I'm happy, this is a big focus area for us, it really needs to be. We have enrollees, so the first, first number is eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty-three, and then we have completers. Was the completers, were the completers included in the number of enrollees?
No, ma'am, they are separate, you can sum, you can sum, you can and should sum across each year.
I was wondering why we were adding, I thought that it would, but I get it, okay, thank you. Then, page twenty-two, we talked about the Pre-K program. How many programs do you know are in Michigan for Pre-K?
So we are referring to the Great Start Readiness Program here. That is, when we talk about Goal One, we are talking about the Great Start Readiness Program and all of the GSRP classrooms across the state. Some of them are in public schools, some of them are in community-based organizations.
Do you know the number?
The number of classrooms or the number of students?
The number of programs.
So.
There's great state programs, and it's saying the number of quality programs are ten.
Where are you referring to?
Page twenty-two.
Are you referring to that chart right here?
Yeah.
Okay, so that first line, that first row refers to the quality benchmarks that NEAR has for GSRP programs, and we meet ten of ten quality benchmarks. Yep.
The pathways for, we talked about, we talked about teacher programming, Grow Your Own programming. So I wanted to know, we're creating programming for people who want to go get their degrees in teaching. What about people that already may have a college degree and they want to change professions? What considerations have been made for them?
Sure. So the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program that was announced yesterday at Saginaw ISD, and which is going to generate agreements in a number of local school districts in Saginaw ISD, and ultimately across the state of Michigan. Those are partnerships between ed prep providers on the one hand, higher ed institutions on the one hand, and LEAs or ISDs on the other. And they're to develop four groups of people broadly writ, students into teachers, support staff into teachers, community members. community members into teachers, and mid-career changers into teachers. Each of these can plug into the Teacher Apprenticeship Program. Each of these can benefit from the student-teacher stipends at the end of their programs. Each of these can tap into the fellowships or the scholarships to become teachers, the $305 million to which we refer. $175 million in Grow Your Own. If you, as a mid-career changer, shift over and become a support staff member initially, and then subsequently a teacher. So what we're doing is we're building multiple pathways, local school district by local school district. This is not the state saying you will do registered teacher apprenticeship. This is local school. This is us facilitating the creation of new pathways at the LEA level, the local school district, and the ISD level.
So what does that look like? So for example, in my family, we have a lot of nurses. Some of them started with a bachelor's degree in another field and switched over. When they switched over, it was, you know, a one-year accelerated program. They didn't have to go, you know, a whole new bachelor's degree. So just wondering, do they need to have some more college? Or are they just going to go through the program and get certified? How does it work?
It depends upon what they have. So if I have gone through a teacher prep program, I was never certified. What I need is very small compared to, I've got a bachelor's degree, but it's not in a teacher prep program. That's very different from, I've got an associate's degree, but I've never studied education. And that's very different from, I've got a high school diploma and 10 years of experience working with children, but no college degree. So each of those is going to end up being a separate pathway. And in the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Model, developed local school district by local school district with individual ed prep institutions across the state. In the case of yesterday, Saginaw Valley State University. But I anticipate that these will become well-used across the state. LEAs, ISDs with ed prep institutions. And so there's going to be an individual who comes right out of industry, has worked for 20 years, has a bachelor's degree, has to pick up some ed prep work, but already has the bachelor's degree. So you may start with the need for a year and a half's worth of credit or a year's worth of credit. And that's going to be institution by institution. Got to have a bachelor's degree to get a teaching certificate, number one. Got to go through an ed prep program, number two. Got to pass the MTTC, number three. Ultimately have to be certified, number four. But there are a lot of ways to skin that cat.
Page 27.
What's the it?
I just wanted to, so I really like the idea that, you know, we're going to talk about different, and this is page 27. I think I'm doing the same thing that Ellen.
I got it. No, I. I'm following. Thanks.
So as far as American history and being more inclusive of different cultures, I really like that idea. As far as that goes, I'm concerned about standards for curriculum when it comes to that. I feel like everyone's history is very diverse and very rich. And that should be delivered in a way that has very honest facts and that's very balanced. So sometimes we can concentrate just on the negatives or what can be conceived as negatives as opposed to the great contributions that the culture has or that, you know, that particular culture has delivered to American society. So I just think that we should be more cognitive and more sensitive to that. And I wanted to make that point in that area.
Thank you.
Page 60. We talked about the chronic absenteeism. When I went to NASB, I did the school visit. And we went to Wildflower Academy. They also have that issue. I mean, this is a national issue with COVID. And one of the things that they did to improve it is to implement incentive, an incentive program. And of course, that would be something district by district and depending on, you know, looking at the children's intrinsic and extrinsic motivating factors. But I think that that's something that maybe too NDE could help with, coming up with some guidelines of some types of infinitives. Page 31. What contributed to the decline?
We're talking about lead or asthma?
For the less. Was there less testing? Was there like less access to testing due to the pandemic?
We do not know. It's a great question.
Was there less exposure from staying at home? Like maybe their work was led at the school as opposed to the home. But I think it's important to try to figure out.
I agree. Our next set of data will help us understand if this was one-off and this was simply under-reporting. Or not under-reporting, but the inability to get tested in the midst of the pandemic. Or if this was in fact a change in a curve. It bears continued scrutiny. What else?
CTE. I'm a big proponent for CTE as well. I think that children should have the option to graduate with a degree, if they want to, at least an associate's degree. They should be able to come out with a trade program. And I think that will help a lot of students. Not everybody's going to go to college. We know that. I think that would help a lot of students that are especially in, living in areas of poverty, experiencing poverty, for them to be able to come out of high school and go into a job that they want to. What are some of the barriers of implementation that you've seen besides funding and talent for having these programs?
Sure. So I think that there are several barriers. One, there are differential offerings across the state. Different local school districts and different ISDs have different capacities to deliver CTE than others. And what passes for career and technical education in some corners of the state would not be considered CTE in other corners of the state. Some ISDs have career and technical education millages. Some do not. Some have CTE centers. Some do not. Some have very substantial programs in local school districts which can be shared by neighboring school districts within the RESA or ISD. Some do not. And we have got to work on these CTE deserts in the state. It's very, very important. So that's one barrier, if you will. A second barrier that exists is even if you have a CTE millage, if you have a CTE center, or if you don't have a CTE center, but you have a CTE millage and you have rich programs in local school districts, which all children in a RESA can avail themselves of. I may not want to go to your school or you to mine for that CTE program. So the good news is it's available. The bad news is I'm not walking into that school in order to avail myself of that opportunity because I feel uncomfortable, uncomfortable in that space. And whether that's the broader CTE center or the individual local school district, we have to break down some of those barriers. Those can be longstanding barriers. They are often, not always, but they are often begun by adults who may long since have ceased to be in a given program area. But programs get reflected upon in particular ways. And kids operate based on those premises. And we have to break that down. Have to break that down. So I think there's some funding deserts. There's some program deserts. There's some cultural issues. I'm just not going to go to your school or you to mine, whatever that may mean. And that may have nothing to do with ethnicity or race or even socioeconomic status. It may simply be, look, I'm not going to go across a line into Escanaba. Or I'm not going to go from Escanaba into another school. I'm not going to go from Atsigo to Plainwell, Plainwell to Atsigo. This is a big deal.
Oakley County has a great example of that with the programming where the CTE program is set up in different cities and students get bused to the programming. I want to say one of the obstacles with that is the timing for transportation to and from. Because they still have to, you know, take classes at school. So that's just something to consider when it comes to shared programming.
So Ms. Tilly, stay there. Because I don't want to lose that. Because that relates to another important barrier around CTE program expansion, number one. Not a barrier, but a challenge, a challenge. And it relates to what Ms. Lipton was talking about with respect to a number of barriers around absenteeism, including but not limited to transportation. So this is a big deal. We struggle with getting bus drivers, number one. There are always going to be scheduling issues. You cannot magically transport a child at 10:33 from one high school across county and get them into a classroom at 10:38, into the automotive mechanic bays at 10:38. That is not happening, okay? There's no way. Even if you have great bus drivers and great buses, and, 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 still not going to happen. There are always going to be jaggednesses in schedules. My concern is that even when we can deal with the transportation challenges, kids don't want to necessarily go there. So we have to, we've got some brilliant CTE instructors across the state, really extraordinary CTE instructors across the state. And most of them want the broadest range of kids in their programs. But for whatever reason, the kids don't necessarily feel it. And we've got to work on whatever's in our kids' minds about. I don't want to cross that boundary to go into such and such a school or school district or ISD for that. And I've seen this for decades. This is not, you know, I read this in a book. I've seen it for decades. I've seen it in numbers for decades. I've explored it with people. We've worked to try to chip away at this. And I think that we're making inroads in this regard. But I think we've got a long way to, long way to go. What else?
I was going to make a point about we need to rethink how we engage our students and support them to increase enrollment and retention in the CTE programs. My last point I want to say is, we talked about increasing social workers and different roles. One of the important roles we need to increase in a classroom are pair roles. When I was working in the schools, that was a huge issue. I know that, from my understanding, at least with state law, if you have children that have disabilities, there should be a pair pro in the classroom. And that's not always been available. There were classrooms, of course, without pair pros or there was a shared pair pro. But at Wildflower, one of the things that helped their literacy program be so successful is they had different reading groups. They had about five different reading groups within one classroom. And they had multiple pair pros, especially with the younger children, to help with that. So I think that's something important we should think about pushing for as well. Thank you.
It's all going to be, it's all going to be a financial issue.
Yes, definitely.
Because you will see more pairs in classrooms in communities and states that can afford them. There's a value associated with that. You can reduce a de facto student-teacher ratio with a good pair professional in a classroom. I've seen classrooms where the pairs are more experienced than are the teachers. It's not a disrespect to the teachers. But you know, you're a 35-year-old pair professional. I'm a 22-year-old teacher. Who's got more experience working with kids? Thank you. Who's next? Dr. Q.
I'll take a stab. I don't have as many questions. First, I want to just thank you for this information and having an opportunity over the last few months to travel the state. I mean, this is the type of information that people want to know that our leading education department has a pulse on. So appreciate all of this information and look forward to digesting it more. Just really simple questions that I have. On the slide 10, around the national trends with the teacher prep, wanting to know if we've looked to see how Michigan is doing in comparison to other states?
So we do have some comparisons with other states. We're a little bit, there's a national organization that does some comparisons in this area. We periodically will look at their, that their work. I will tell you that I think when you compare across states, you have to be extraordinarily careful to be counting apples, apples, and not apples, oranges. And we care deeply about what's going on in Michigan and are very careful about how we count and what we count and to explain appropriately, and, and, and. When you're trying to do that for 50 states, sometimes things get lost, get a little bit lost in the translation. I will say that I think nationally, there was a diminution in teacher preparation. And it was not as profound as you see in Michigan. Because I think we did certain things legislatively that exacerbated that trend in the nation. But on the positive side, we're doing some things in Michigan to drive those numbers up, which are much greater than are being done elsewhere in the nation. I presented to the Council of Chief State School Officers on the development of a comprehensive mental health system a couple of weeks ago. And there were some eyebrows raised about the recent investments in mental health in our state. And people were like, wow, that's really extraordinary. It is extraordinary. It was extraordinary when we had nothing for children's mental health in the State School Aid Act. And it's extraordinary to add a quarter of a billion dollars this fiscal year into the State School Aid Act for children's mental health. So we do explore comparisons. I will tell you that I think our decline was more precipitous in a national teacher shortage. And that I believe that our upswing over a period of the next few years is going to be more substantial as well. The problem in this area is, as in so many areas, there's lagging data. So you will see, this slide cuts off at 2021. So we don't have the results and won't until spring of 2023 of last year's ed prep numbers. And I beg your pardon. Strike that. In 2023, those 2021 data will become firmed up. We won't have 21, 22 data until spring of '24. So in some ways, this trend line lags behind the actuality.
And then I think to Ellen's point, one of the points, or one of the questions that she had, that she asked was around the number of teachers that we would want to see. And we were talking, you were talking about making sure that we had enough teachers because we need to also monitor how many teachers we're losing. But also just thinking about classroom size. And if we, I don't think that we talk anything about that and what we're seeing around classroom sizes. And if there's any way that we can talk about the number of. and if there's any way that we can talk about the number of teachers that we will want to see as it relates to our current average classroom sizes.
So so that was a lot. And let me, let me just unpack it really quickly. Class sizes in some places
Yes, very, yeah.
are too large.
Yeah, yeah.
In in some, in some grade levels, in some districts, in some disciplines are too large. I I had the opportunity to experience Ms. Hanson's first grade class, okay? I mean, she, I I don't think is is unnerved by her first grade class. She's not, she's not teaching 30 first graders every year to to read. Where, what I'd like to see on the class size issue is those early L-class sizes be lower so we do a better job in teaching kids literacy and numeracy so that they are more capable moving up into upper elementary, middle and high school. So we have fewer discipline issues where I'm acting out, not because I'm a bad kid, but because I'm not capable in this classroom and it's frustrating to me. And so I do what I do and teachers do what they do. It doesn't help teachers, it doesn't help students, and ultimately it doesn't help us get children through high school graduation and out into post-secondary education into a world of work. So on class sizes, I'm most interested in the early. I think that there are places across the state that need to work on class sizes more substantially than than early. But I think there are other places across the state that have wonderful class sizes. First thing I do when I enter a classroom is to count. How many babies? And does this, does this teacher, given what she or he teaches, do they have a fighting chance to get it done in this, in this classroom? So I think class size is important. SFRC built its funding model on class sizes.
Just a few, just quick other things. I'm wondering, and I don't know if you mentioned this and I missed it, if we have any partakers in the recip, Lord. Reciprocity, thank you, reciprocity with the other states.
So so each year, the last five years, we've had more than 1,000 teachers that have been initially certified outside of the state, subsequently certified in the state. The most recent year for which we have data, 1,300 teachers, 31% of the teachers were initially certified outside of the state, subsequently certified in Michigan. That said, we think we can do better. And we have worked with Senator McBroom from the Western UP to introduce Senate Bill 861, which would lower the barrier to reciprocity. This is a big deal, particularly in portions of the UP that do a lot of recruiting from outside of the state. And and we think if we lower the barrier for experienced teachers already certified in another state, already gone through an ed prep program in another state, we think we can generate more veteran teachers in the state of Michigan. So we want Senate Bill 861 to pass on teacher reciprocity barriers being reduced. Senate Bill 942 being passed, same concept on council reciprocity. And House Bill 6411 to pass on the ability to support staff members under particular conditions, being able to be substitute teachers during this difficult period where we're beating back the shortage.
And I think this is my last question, or not, really not, it's not a question. But you talked about CTE and Tiffany brought up some of the numbers. But one of the things that I continue to bring up is around the stigma of CTE for many of our communities and making sure that we're addressing that. Number one, making sure that those stigmas are not real, but also talking to parents and grandparents because I still hear parents and particularly of black and brown children who are concerned about their children being tracked into dead-end jobs. And so, you know, that's still just a real stigma that is out there. And so just making sure that we raise that and how do we we address that.
It's a really important point. The CTE of the past is not the CTE of the present and the future. And we have to consistently make those points. The best people to make those points are teachers. That the brilliant CTE teachers are, in a fashion, Pied Pipers of of education. And they they excite kids who then go and excite other kids. You need to be in Mr. Jones's CTE program. You need to be in Mrs. Smith's CTE program. And they begin to change the the dialogue around around that. But I do acknowledge that there are people with dated understandings of CTE, the notion of dead-end tracking. Yes?
I just, I I forgot one of my points about CTE when she said that. Not only how we engage the students, but how we engage the parents. It's so important and making sure that they have a comprehensive list of the programs that are available for their students is important as well.
That that is really important and we should make that point with LEAs and ISDs, that they have a responsibility. It's not the only way you would recruit, but it's hard to recruit. It's hard to be recruited into. It's hard to consider programs about which you have no information. And so we have a responsibility. And I think that there are a number of RISA's ISDs that make those programs available to. But I think you have to do it more than just in a one and done. You have to be on it and on it and on it and on it and on it. Because the the parent that gets something, he, okay, well, whatever. Okay? Well, you get invited to different, different events associated with CTE programming. You have kids calling other kids and saying, hey, I know you're just coming into the high school. I I know you're you're only a half a year in, but you know, starting in your 10th grade year, you can begin to consider CTE. And let me tell you, there's some great CTE programs. A lot of that helps to recruit. So I think there's a real, a real value to that.
And I just, because I want to, I think we're all clear here, but I just want to say it is that what we're talking about really are perceived concerns. But there are some real concerns because I do believe that there are people who get into this conversation and it muddles it up where there is. I I'm concerned that that there are folks who are more concerned with children being good employees. And what we want to do is make sure we have children who are prepared for the best future ahead of them and that they have some stake in that, some say in that, and they get an opportunity to have that experience to determine that. So I think we have to balance that conversation, making sure that they know, like you said, what these CTE programs are and who the people are at the helm of of teaching their children, educating their children and giving them this hands-on experience while building that confidence.
I think, I think you're right. I also think that the the conversation around these secondary school programs has to take place together. Because I am, in in a lot of ways, agnostic as to the rigor you seek. I am not agnostic as to whether you seek rigor. Children should be reaching and and trying to self-actualize in whatever they feel is self-actualization. And that should be with with involvement of parents and educators as well. What we don't want is children half-stepping their way through their their education. And so if 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 it is CTE, beautiful. If it's AP, that's fine. If it's early middle college, that's great. What isn't fine is if you're capable of more and all you're doing is coasting through school. Not cool. Thank you.
That's it for me.
Okay. All right. Very good. Dr. Pichet?
Thank you very much for this information. I have a friend who has a saying that says, give me 24 hours and I'll be spontaneous. So watch for some emails with some more questions, but just some general comments. First of all, thank you for reaching out with the letters to those students who may have some good potential there for AP classes because I do believe that in in many instances, students just don't think that they're prepared, that they're ready for it. So while that should not be the, I I agree with Ellen. While that should not be the only way we reach out, certainly that is a good first step. Kudos to GSRP to preschool. I am a strong, strong believer in preschool. I have seen it in action and it is a great program. There are other preschool programs out there also, Head Start. But GSRP has over the years become better and better. And if we can continue to increase enrollment in that, we will be, our children will be better off. And teacher recruitment also. I think we are certainly moving in the right direction. The announcement yesterday was was one more step. Mental health supports, I can remember as a building administrator, literally pulling my hair out sometimes on the fact that we did not have enough support personnel in the building to be able to assist those children who might not be in full crisis at that point, but because of a family situation or something, needed someone else to speak with, needed some help in just knowing where do I go next. And we just didn't have that support because you're right. When I was in the buildings, that money was not there and we were unable to provide the support. So to the governor, to the legislators, thank you for that and I hope we can continue to build on it. Just one comment on assessments. And if you ever want to see Dr. Albrecht be animated, you should sit next to her during a NAEP presentation at NASB. But I just want to commend classroom teachers around the state of Michigan right now. Yes, we have indicators. We've got MSTEP, we've got NAEP results. But today, every teacher in the state of Michigan, if you walked in and said, how is Susie progressing? They would know. And they would also know what their plan is in order to help Susie progress to where they believe she needs to be at that point. So I don't want to lose that in this conversation. I know we have to look at the other indicators, but we also need to focus in on the teacher assessment that goes on sometimes, especially with the little ones, with the kindergarten, first, second and third graders. Sometimes every 10, 15 minutes, something is clicking in the teacher's mind on, okay, I just saw that. That's great. So now we can move here. I don't know how you do it, but thank you.
Amen.
So I continue to providing that support to our teachers across the board pre-K 12. So those are my comments.
Very good. Thank you very much.
The questions will come later.
I understand. We look forward to spontaneity in 24 hours. Thank you. Anyone else? Going once, twice, thrice. Board, it's 11:58. And I appreciate the rich conversation. We are breaking for lunch. We will come back at 1 o'clock and we will complete the morning in the early afternoon and roll forward accordingly. Thank you.